June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. This morning, what we had was Reverend Christopher Williams, Pastor Yorktown Baptist Church, and Mrs. Williams. Good morning. Please join us at the podium for the invocation. Stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let's pray. Gracious Father, we come once again to say thank you. We're so grateful for the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon us, this county. We ask your blessing upon our commissioners. And then God bless this meeting as we go forward. God, our hearts, our minds, and our tongues. We ask these things in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Commissioner Doitt is at home recovering today, so he won't be with us. We're just gonna carry on as best we can. And let us begin by recognizing our retirees. We have two present. Our retirees are Richard Hinton, Equipment Operator III, thirty-five years and eight months. Brenda Smith, Equipment Operator III, ten years and six months. And the two who are with us today are Clifford Oswald, Building Maintenance Supervisor, ten years and two months, and the granddaddy of Public Works, Patrick Williams, Public Services Assistant Superintendent, forty-one years and one month. Clifford?
Well, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
It's great to have you this morning. We just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you and to recognize you for your service, for your many years of service to the citizens of Mobile County, and just let you know how much we appreciate it and how much we wish you the very best going forward into your retirement. And today we have we have a presentation, and this is a certificate for each of you. Mr. Oswald, this is to express sincere thanks and gratitude for your ten, ten years and two months of dedicated service. Thank you so much. And Mr. Patrick Williams, and what did you call him now?
The granddaddy.
The granddaddy. Okay. Well, Mr. Williams, we're gonna miss you after forty-one years and one month now. You don't look like you're old enough to have worked that long. Anyway. You wear it well. Anyway, we appreciate your dedicated service as well as your, in your wisdom and your commitment and your teamwork with the others, because obviously you have established a very good relationship in those many years, for over four decades. So thank you, sir, for your work for the county. Let's give you a round of applause. And would either of you like? Yeah, let's do that. Wait a minute, we got a thinker here.
First, I'd like to say good morning to each and every one. I just wanna thank God for the opportunity he gave me to come and be utilized by Mobile County Public Works over forty-two years, honestly. And I just wanna thank the citizens of Mobile allowing me to work in their communities. I wanna thank each of you that worked along with me, for working with me and giving me an opportunity to serve Mobile County. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers this morning?
Yes, ma'am, we have two people signed up to speak this morning. The first is Zatania Kirksey Killings, and she would like to address the commission about noise complaint. Ma'am?
Which I, which, I'm sorry, I missed the item.
She has a noise complaint she would like to address the commission about.
Okay. Would you just make, speak into the mic? Is it on?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
My name is Zatavia Kirksey Killen. I reside at six-six-two-four Madison Average Court, Theodore, Alabama. And the purpose of me being here is the ongoing of my neighbor's dogs' excessive barking and disturbance. I'm requesting if a noise audience can be mandated in account of Theodore, Alabama, due to unreasonable and unruly barking dogs. I have resided at my residence for approximately nineteen years and have lived in my home peacefully until two years ago. I have been a dog owner of nine years of Lucy, a lovely, beautiful cocker spaniel. Unfortunately, she passed. My love for her brought joy and unconditional love to me. I have the care and compassion for dogs. As a former dog owner, I know it requires responsibility and accountability, and I made sure to exemplify my duties by not disturbing my neighbors. Lucy was a house dog, but any time she went outside, it was only to run around the yard. She did not cause too much noise, and if she did, it was my responsibility as a dog owner to make sure that I brought her back inside. Unfortunately, my neighbors doesn't have the same respect. The constant noise of their barking dogs is out of control and has affected my ability to sleep peacefully. It has caused interference with my studying, stress, and health problems, and my inability to focus at work. I can't even enjoy a show on television. These dogs bark throughout the week hours of the morning and linger on to the next day. It's even a problem for me to sit in my backyard or even to pull the garbage to the curb without being profusely barked by my neighbor dogs. I am being attacked by seven loud barking dogs. It's not fair for me to have to leave my home and go somewhere quiet, such as the park. Our homes are close together. My neighbor backyard is adjacent to my bedroom. I have contacted the Mobile Animal Shelter to no avail. They informed me there isn't an audience or state law in Alabama to limit or address dog barking or a time designated for dog barking that is allowed within an unincorporated area of Mobile County. Afterwards, I met with Attorney Jarvis to see what are my rights, so I can get back to living peacefully in my home. And he informed me I have rights under Alabama Supreme Court. It is allowed to protect those citizens who are affected by unreasonable or private nuisance with interference to enjoy their land. I have attached a letter that was written by Attorney Jarvis for Mr. Doitt's review. And that was mailed and delivered to my neighbors, and to no avail, there was an inner resolution by their parent. This could have been resolved by purchasing, I feel, an anti-bark dog collar or by simply keeping them secured in their home. Mr. Doitt, I am requesting for you, sir, to please mandate a noise audience. It is only rightfully fair and would also make pet owners to be held accountable. Again, I do propose down ownership, but I do oppose pet owners who shows a lack of consideration and respect to those who are affected by their lack of ability for not taking action to keep from disturbing neighbors. If acceptable, sir, I would like to now present to you and your constituents several audio recordings of the video. So I basically wanna just kinda share the excessive barking that disturbs me throughout the night and throughout the morning. If I could just kinda share some of the video. Oh, let's see. I don't know why. Okay, just a moment, let's see. Sorry about that, I had it on here. Okay, thirty seconds, okay. Okay. And this is throughout the night and morning. And this is seven dogs. So Mr. Doitt, I hope you can find a resolution and an effective noise audience can be put in place. This will allow us homeowners the opportunity to live peacefully and feel good and feel against securing our homes and environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't, as you see, Commissioner Doitt is home recovering from surgery today, but I'm sure that he'll reach out to you later. But the information that you were given is correct, that right now, the county commissioner does not have the authority to enact the kind of ordinance that you are requesting. That would have to come from the state legislature. But it's not, that it's not possible to do, but just right now, we just don't have that authority. And if you would, just if you would give him a little time to follow up with you as, after he recovers from his surgery.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And thank you for coming.
I have a question of Jay. Jay, are there, are you aware of any nuisance laws on the books that this would maybe fall under?
I don't think so. I'd like to see what Attorney Jarvis sent to her. Clearly, it's a private nuisance, but county government does not allow to enforce a private nuisance. But we'll get with Commissioner Doitt and read what Mr. Jarvis sent her, and I'll work with Commissioner Doitt on response.
We can certainly appreciate your frustration. I can't imagine what that must be like.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we have one other speaker, Cindy Nolton, is here from Mobile County Extension, and she would like to address the commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Nolton, County Extension Director at ten-seventy Schillinger Road North, John Archer Building. Just wanted to let you know that the roof was signed off, everything approved last Thursday, so that job has been completed. Also, I wanted to share, or I wanted to thank you all for your continual support of Mobile County Extension. We have so much going on now that we're back in the building, what we did before, but now the whole building's being utilized as well. And I will get those flyers so that they can be uploaded to your monthly newsletters. Also, I just wanted to wrap up with this coming Thursday being our annual Grand Bay Watermelon Promotion. So we will come to your floors and deliver the watermelons. It's gonna be scaled back a little bit this year because a lot of our agents are on a professional development trip. So got some volunteers helping and a couple of staff, and we'll plan on seeing you on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm just glad you're not here to tell us the roof is leaking. I thought for a half a second there, but good, it's doing its job.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No more speakers.
Okay. Mr. Kerr?
Item one. Approval list of claims.
Some of second.
Two. Hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard. For or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report?
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Hearing none, the public, the public hearing is not closed.
Three. Hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program Year 2020 Action Plan. This information has been available to the public since June seventeenth.
Public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers for or against? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Four. Adopt, adopt substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program Year 2020 Action Plan following the comment period and public hearing.
Oh, some of second.
Five. Approve memorandum of agreement between Mobile County Sheriff's Office and Naval Surface Warfare Center Crane Division to extend the life of military electro-optics equipment with civilian law enforcement officials in the amount of six thousand, six hundred dollars, and to authorize the commission president to sign all necessary documents.
Some of second.
Six. Approve memorandum of agreement among the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, and Mobile County Sheriff's Office to designate the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency as the fiscal agent for the Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Some of second.
Seven. Approve amending professional services contract with University of South Alabama, approved in the December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four minutes, Agenda Item twenty-six, for Bishop State Archival Project to extend the project's ending date of June thirtieth to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, under the same terms and at no additional cost.
Some of second.
Eight. Approve assignment to Dell Consulting for Strickland Youth Center Lightning Protection, Lightning Protection. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associated with installation of lightning surge protection at Strickland Youth Center Campus in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Some of second.
Nine. Approve request of county administration to purchase two vehicles from the Revenue Commission's reappraisal inventory surplus for fair market value in the total amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for vehicles as follows.
Some of second.
Ten. Approve renewal of agreement with Rock's Technologies in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars for cloud GIS managed services.
Some of second.
Eleven. Approve amendment to sub-recipient agreement with the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the local recovery program associated with Hurricanes Sally and Zeta, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, to incorporate program description, scope of work, and budget attachments.
Some of second.
Twelve. Approve appropriation contract with J.E. Turner Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Two Education Funds to assist with the cost of sunshades and outdoor benches for J.E. Turner Elementary School.
Some of second.
Thirteen. Approve appropriation contract with Southwest Mobile Chamber of Commerce in the amount of five thousand dollars from District Three Education Funds for its Kids Day Back-to-School Giveaway on Saturday, July twenty-sixth.
Some of second.
Fourteen. Approve sponsorship agreement with the University of South Alabama Jag Gals in the amount of five hundred dollars from District Two Education Funds for its sports social fundraiser to benefit student athletes at the University of South Alabama on Tuesday, August nineteenth.
Some of second.
Fifteen. Approve appropriation contract with Independent Order of Oddfellows Bay Shore Lodge Two Forty-seven in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Three Commission Funds for operating expenses.
Some of second.
Sixteen. Approve sub-recipient agreement with Franklin Primary Health Center in the amount of up to four hundred thousand dollars for mobile health access equipment purchase under the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program.
Some of second.
Seventeen. Approve reappointment of Dr. Reginald Sykes to serve on the Board of Directors of the Mobile County Board of Human Resources for a term of six years.
Some of second.
Eighteen. Approve appropriation contract with Bernice Causey Parent Teacher Student Association in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents from District Three Education Funds to purchase equipment and supplies for the robotics program.
Some of second.
Nineteen. We ask that you consider taking the following action on bids, with the exception that we will remove the last item within the list referencing the new Chevrolet pickup truck for the sheriff's office.
Some of second.
Twenty. Approve renewal of subscription agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of six hundred and thirteen dollars and two cents for backup exec, simple core pack with five instances on premise standard for the Mobile County Probate Court.
Some of second.
Twenty-one. Approve software agreement with Unity Fiber under the current state of Alabama contract in the amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents for security software and multi-factor authentication for the county commission.
Some of second.
Twenty-two. Approve renewal of subscription agreement with Propeller Arrow in the amount of six hundred dollars for Arrow Points PPK Corrections Data for the county commission.
Some of second.
Twenty-three. Approve a building maintenance project for emergency replacement of a twenty-five-ton air handler and coils located in the kitchen cafeteria area at James T. Strickland Youth Center from Gorham Air Conditioning in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Some of second.
Twenty-four. Approve two-year service agreements with Train U.S. in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars from the current purchasing cooperative, Omnia Racine, for Mobile, excuse me, for MetroGel, MetroGel Barracks, Revenue Commission, Mobile Government Plaza, and Government Plaza Annex.
Some of second.
Twenty-five. Approve renewal of agreements with Knox Pest Control for annual termite services at James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of three hundred dollars, and Mobile Government Plaza in the amount of four hundred and ten dollars.
Some of second.
Twenty-six. Adopt sole-source resolution approving renewal of software maintenance contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars for Arc GIS desktop services for the Revenue Commission.
Some of second.
Twenty-seven. Approve amending two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan to create project West Mobile County Park Expansion in the estimated budget amount of thirty thousand, one hundred dollars. This amendment creates a new project, West Mobile County Park Expansion, and also allocates thirty thousand, one hundred dollars for the budget from the Capital Improvement Plan District Three unnamed projects.
Some of second.
Twenty-eight. Approve contract amendment number thirteen to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Watermark Design Group to add additional services for West Mobile County Park Expansion to be paid from the project numbers as follows.
Some of second.
Twenty-nine. Approve agreement with Salt Air Boat and RV Storage for storage of Environmental Services Department workboats in the amount of ten thousand dollars for a three-year period.
Some of second.
Thirty. Approve agreement with OpenGov in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents plus travel and expense not to exceed two thousand, four hundred dollars for implementation of Parks and Recreation Enterprise Asset Management.
Some of second.
Thirty-one. Authorize advertising and request for proposal for operation of a restaurant at Escataba Hollow Park and Campground.
Some of second.
Thirty-two. Award bid to Gibson Construction Services for project Balabatri Water Distribution System upgrades for their total low bid in the amount of six million, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, and authorize execution of contract documents.
Some of second.
Thirty-three. Approve change order number three with Sycamore Construction for project West Mobile Ballfields. This change order will decrease the contract amount by two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents with no change to the construction schedule, and the final contract will be in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and two cents.
Some of second.
Thirty-four. Authorize advertisement of request for qualifications for design professional code compliance to professional, to provide professional evaluation, design, and administrative services for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Disaster Recovery Grant.
Some of second.
Thirty-five. Approve minor amendment to the two thousand twenty-three action plans to reallocate two thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents of the emergency shelter funds and nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty-eight cents of the homelessness prevention funds to rapid rehousing program in the total amount of twelve thousand, eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Some of second.
Thirty-six. Approve amendment to sub-recipient agreement with hope for all Gulf Coast for the rapid rehousing services under the Emergency Solutions Grant to extend the term from January thirty-first through August thirty-first and increase the agreement amount by twelve thousand, eighty-nine dollars and one cent for a total in the amount of seventy thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and one cent.
Some of second. I'm pausing because there's a few cents difference between thirty-five and thirty-six, is that?
Good morning, Commissioner. We'll double-check which, which amount is correct.
Okay.
It's, so apparently both, both numbers are correct. There's some leftover funding in the, already in the homelessness prevention or the, in the hope-for-all-Gulf Coast contract. And so the, the amount being moved is not the total. That's being applied to the new contract.
This looks like change that came out of the couch or something.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
In a manner of speaking, right.
Thirty-seven. Adopt resolution continuing to provide tax exemption for Mobile County sales and use taxes for hearing instruments from September first in perpetuity pursuant to Alabama Legislative Act two thousand twenty-five dash two eighty.
Some of second.
Thirty-eight. Approve reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with the Utilities Board of the Town of Citronell doing business at South Alabama Utilities for waterline relocation for project Andrew Road, Henry Andrew Road, Frank Taylor Road, and Cedar Creek Baptist Church Road for the estimated cost of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents to Mobile County.
Some of second.
Thirty-nine. Approve supplemental agreement number one with Gibson Construction Services as follows. Increase project for City of Pritchard Streets, Wausen Avenue by nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and sixty cents for the replacement of established flowers, shrubs, and trees from the city beautification project. And increase project City of Pritchard Water and Sewer relocation on Wausen Avenue by forty-six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars for the addition of pay items for the relocation of eight-inch water main and deletion of pay items for six-inch water main.
Some of second.
Forty. Authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the property owners for the projects as follows.
Some of second.
Forty-one. Approve right-of-way and or easement agreement for tract twenty on Reaver Road in the amount of five hundred and ninety dollars for project St. Michael Street, St. Michael Street East, and amount of $590 for project St. Michael Street, St. Michael Street East, and Reva Road Gray Drain Basin Pave.
So moved. Second.
Forty-two, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for St. Michael Street for project St. Michael Street, St. Michael Street East, and Reva Road Gray Drain Basin Pave in the total amount of $2,545 to be divided as follows.
So moved. Second.
Forty-three, authorize advertising and receiving bids for project safety improvements to Celeste Road and Schillinger Road South.
So moved. Second.
Forty-four, approve supplemental agreement number two with HCL Contracting for project Jeff Hamilton Road at Johnson Road South and Johnson Road West Roundabout and project Johnson Road West Gray Drain Basin Pave to increase the contract total amount by $12,000 for the addition of temporary traffic markings.
So moved. Second.
Forty-five, award bid to HCL Contracting for project Barlow Road and Havens Road Gray Drain Basin Pave for their low bid in the amount of $1,388,142.97.
So moved. Second.
Forty-six, recommend assenting to the county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval of the proposed plat for one year from the previous date of approval as follows for Pines of Dawes.
So moved. Second.
Forty-seven, approve proposed plat only of Lilette Lane subdivision.
So moved. Second.
Forty-eight, approve proposed and final plat of Dawes Park.
So moved. Second.
Forty-nine, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the public streets as follows, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Sims pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved. Second.
Fifty, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the public streets as follows, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Balabatri pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-one, approve change order number one with Mid-America Sports Construction for project Mobile County Soccer Fields Phase Two for relocation of multiple utility lines and extending the contract time by 36 days, increasing the contract amount by $28,587.15.
So moved. Second.
I was about to ask a question. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I was just wondering, did, was there an issue that came up with the utility lines? Or was something unexpected, I guess?
It was. They're tying in the drainage from the new fields into the back of one of the inlets just to allow for the drainage. And there were utility lines in the way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Fifty-two, approve agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation regarding the Alabama Uniform Certification Program for partner recipients within the state of Alabama that receive funding from the Federal Highway Administration, Federal Aviation Administration, Federal Transit Administration, or the Alabama Port Authority. This agreement relates to the requirements, requirements contained within 49 CFR Part 26.81 for certification of disadvantaged business enterprises.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-three, approve making request to the Alabama Department of Transportation that the right-of-way acquired by the Alabama Department of Transportation for project Schillinger Road from Howells Ferry Road to US 98 and project Schillinger Road from US 98 to State Route 217 to be transferred to the county excluding all or portions of tracks 105, 108, 109, and 110 adjacent to US 98 that will be retained by the Alabama Department of Transportation.
So moved. Second.
And Commissioners, there's one add-on this morning. Add-on number one, adopt resolution to provide a tax exemption from Mobile County sales and use taxes for honeybee byproducts except honey from September 1st through, in perpetuity pursuant to Alabama Legislative Act 2025-280.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-four, commission announcements and/or comments.
I just wanted to take the opportunity, I know we're gonna, there's a reception this afternoon in her honor, but I wanted to, to say thank you to Dana Foster Allen, our finance director. She will be leaving us very shortly and moving to the big state of Texas, and we just want her to know how much we appreciate her and all that she's done and, and the great job. So thank you.
Commissioners, I would ask that the commission consider going to executive session for about 45 minutes to talk about economic development matters and funding and related subject. I would express and authorize it's an appropriate reason going to executive session under the Alabama Open Meetings Act and further so certify the same as a lawyer license to practice law in the state of Alabama. There'd be nothing to vote on when we adjourn, so you can adjourn from this meeting now and not come back in the session, but it will be over before 11:30.
So the motion will be to recess this meeting and adjourn from the executive session.
That's correct. And then we also have the Indigent Care Board after, after a vote to do the executive session.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Got it.
You want me to call to order the Indigent Care Board? I'd like to call to order the June 23rd, 2025, June meeting of the Mobile County Indigent Care Board.
One, adopt minutes of the meeting of May 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the Balance of Indigent Care Fund as of May 31st. Funds available, $167,947.26.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-three, approve request, a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second. We stand.
In recess?
Yeah.